Okay, it's seven o'clock. Call the meeting ordered. We will take the roll. Looks like everybody, everybody, everybody's present. Let's see. Anything under clerk's report?
I'm going to do the minutes.
Oh, minutes, right. Meet, new, new agenda. I'm confused. Okay, everybody have a chance to read the minutes from the April 12th meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Were there any additions or corrections? If not, I would, I would ask for a motion to approve the April minutes as presented.
I'll make a motion to approve it. I'll second April 12th minutes.
Okay, I got a motion from Eddie, a second from Corey, all in favor of approving the April 12th minutes. Signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Now down to clerk's report. Anything under clerk's? There was something we talked about.
Yeah. The insurance renewal came in the mail from Sursa. It's the annual renewal.
And it's due in June.
Well, it's due online in June, but it's, it's for next year, but it's, that's a process that I wasn't going to fill it out and send it in without you guys saying, yeah, you want to keep me. So the new clerk will have to go through this process. And then law convention guy comes out, likes to come out by June to make his assessment where he tells you to get rid of the outhouse and things like that.
Do we have time to talk about the June meeting?
Um.
That's what I-
Well, probably, but why, I mean, it's either you've got to have insurance, so-
Well, yeah, but eh, nobody wants-
It's just not something I wanted to start.
No, no.
And then let somebody finish.
But I didn't want to wait till the June meeting and then they say, sorry, you're too late.
No, it's, you just can't do it online after June.
Okay.
There's a, actually, they want it returned by June 10th, but last year it didn't get returned by, that they get a little upset with you if you don't turn it in when they want it, but-
Okay, well, just want to, I know that-
What are they going to do?
I know the town council will probably want-
It's good, it's for next year.
Okay, we still got time.
But they have a process they have to go through and then they have a questionnaire they have to send out and they have a guy that has to come out and inspect things.
Yeah, I know Nancy was always walking around with the guy.
It's a process on their part.
Okay. Okay, anything else under clerk's report?
Um, no, I gave that letter.
Okay. Treasurers' report.
I paid out the old board people I went ahead and paid them.
Okay.
So everything's, you know, going forward is, that's why there's so many names on there is they were asking about it last meeting and you said you didn't see a problem with paying.
Okay, no, I didn't see a problem.
Usually the board members all get paid at the end of the year. It's, I don't know if that was the rule, if that's what it's been done. I don't know where it came from or, but I went ahead and paid the ones that are gone. Said they're done.
I think that people that leave, sometimes they get paid during the year and sometimes at the end.
So.
Yeah.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions on any loan item?
Just kind of a newbie question. So what's the difference in payment to different trustees and just because some are commissioners?
They weren't present, probably. They get $25 a meeting.
Oh, okay, I got you.
And Rand is building inspector and I paid him up through this, so he's clean.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was a-
Going forward, I don't know.
Generally, generally, if, if somebody say quits, then we don't pay them till the end of the year. It's since the-
Well, this, yeah, and some of them weren't present at some of the meetings this year, so.
Okay, I make sense.
Yes, that's what it was. Any more questions on the treasurer's report? Uh, if not, I would ask for a motion to approve the dispersments for April.
I make a motion to approve the dispersments for April.
I have a motion from Matt. Do I have a second?
I have a second.
Any more questions? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, thank you. Down to the mayor's report. Those that have looked at the agenda may notice that it's a new agenda. It's a new, it's a new format. This, uh, this was compliments of Rachel and it's, I guess, it's, I guess it's long overdue. Uh, the agenda I've been using, I got from Gary Pearson, long time back. And, uh, and then it was many years, many years ago, maybe 10, I was dirt bike riding in Taylor Park and I met a guy from Texas who's a computer IT tech. So he came to my house and he put an agenda master on my computer. So all I had to do was just bring that up, change a few things, add the agenda items and print it. And that made it real easy, so I just stuck with it because it was easier than, than doing a bunch of changes and coming up with something new. But personally, I kind of like what she's done, so maybe we'll, maybe we'll make a few changes, finesse it some and, and maybe I'll try to get something like that done again. But it worked pretty good, so. Rachel, thank you, so. Okay, anything under the attorney's report?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there was a work session this afternoon addressing some of the kind of background legal issues involved with conflicts of interest and open meetings and ex parte communications. And there was discussion whether or not it would be appropriate to discuss in that work session issues relating to the greater vision of the board and whether or not that was appropriate. And you did table it at that time, but Mr. Mayor, I would suggest that a work session be scheduled anywhere from one to three weeks from now to address specifically the issue of vision within the board and to, at some level, have an open dialogue as to what this board's goals are and what this board would like to do going forward.
Okay.
That's my request.
Do the other, I'd like to hear from the trustees of what they think and what, what dates or times they might, that they think might work. Is anybody going to be gone or is everybody going to be here?
I'll be gone until the 25th.
Until the 25th?
Yeah.
And the 25th is-
A Monday.
Okay, I haven't got a calendar.
Just so happens.
Okay. Jim always has a question.
So I keep the tradition, just do it on Tuesday?
We can do every other-
We can do that.
You don't have Tuesday, Tuesday?
Yeah, we can do it on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Uh, Tuesday, the 24th.
24th.
How is it? Okay.
So Brad will have it.
Okay. I'm back that Monday, which is-
You're back 23rd.
Sure.
Okay.
How about the 23rd? How about the 23rd? Do we do it on Monday?
I've got doggy-
I mean, are you back early enough, Brad, or?
I'm fine, but the attorney needs to be there.
He had a conflict.
You got a conflict.
I'm good for Mondays after the 30th. I've got a doggy training session for my two challenges.
That sounds important.
So the 24th would, would work.
The 24th is a Tuesday?
Yes, sir.
At seven o'clock?
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Okay. All right, we will go down to commissioner.
I did, I emailed out those profit loss statements. I guess I probably go to the clerks.
Yes.
I didn't know if anybody had any questions. I never got any response from anybody, so I'm guessing no.
No. They, they, they look good to me. Okay, commissioner of reports, building inspector, Rand's not here. Fire department.
Okay. For those of you who are on the fire department, if you're regular members and you trained and you worked with us, then we asked you to get your measurements because we had to turn out here. The way that they presented it was that you give us your, your measurement in inches. They provided the form. So everybody did that, I sent the forms off. Then the uniforms show up and they're in small, medium, large, extra large, which we have no clue what these measurements equate to. So I called a lady, she sends it back that, you know, this guy was this size, this guy's that size in detail. So we filled packages. Every turnout gear has a bag. And we got the bags because we want for you, we want a place to put the gear until the people from out of town showed up and come back to town. So once you get it, you try it on, if the gear fits, you hang it on your nail and take the bag home because the bag was something we wanted to say to thanks for, for all the training time and everything that everybody does to do it. So now people are starting to get here and start to go try their gear on and we're finding out that the gear doesn't fit.
No.
So I talked with the lady today and she said, now, don't you know, we talked about the fact that there's no return? I said, ma'am, don't even go there right now because that would not be good because I did, the way we did things, we did it to ensure that this wouldn't happen, so if there's any error, it was your error and not ours. So I need for everybody to try your gear on. If your coat's too tight, get ahold of me, tell me, so that we can make these corrections because so far, I think we're only hitting about 50 percent.
I look hefty for my gear not good and it's like-
Well, if it's not along the wall, then it's upstairs. Because we took, and Richards is up there and because, you know, we didn't want people going through it and also we go into all this at our first fire training. But, you know, if you got gear, then it's yours, you put it on, you will be the first person to ever sweat in your coat and in your nomads and so it's really going to be nice. But if you don't train, there will be other gear that doesn't have a name on it and it'll be hanging by sides so that if you show up at a call off, if you don't have dedicated gear, then you know which to get. Just don't get somebody else's dedicated gear. You know, they may be in the shower and get there late and then they show up and their stuff's gone. So, but anyway, the whole point of this deal is to try your stuff on, let me know because somehow I got to go to the- so please let me know.
Okay. Thank, uh, thank you, John. Okay, anything under zoning? Environmental health?
PHCA? PHCA had a donation from Noah Means of several dresses slash costumes for the melodrama. And also PHCA has contracted with a couple of individuals to mow the Nukem Center as well as the museum. And I understand the properties next door with the basketball court and the playground belong to the town and maybe this is something I should talk with Parks and Rec about, but, you know, when they're mowing, if the town would like for them to mow, that is well, they could possibly do that if the town's interested in that.
Okay, I can't see a problem with it myself, you know, you know, because I'm sure that it would, it would look better and enhance the use of the property, so that would be okay as far as I'm concerned. Okay. Is that all under PHCA? Okay, thank you. Town hall?
Yes, we are currently getting some bibs to help repaint a bit of the town hall that has not been treated so well in the last couple of years. It's starting to look a chip away as well as planning a fundraiser for this year.
Okay. Thank you. Ditches? As far as I know, this coming, maybe this coming Friday, Chris, Chris Nassau's going to help me and maybe a couple of other people, maybe, and we're going to try to get the ditches started and get them going.
At least State Street.
At least get, yeah, we're going to start the State Street ditch first. And at the last month's meeting, when Matt came up and gave me the keys, I really failed to, I failed to acknowledge his years of work and effort. I didn't say anything, that was an oversight, so I won't take this time to say thank you for all the work. So, thank you. Okay, streets? Okay, did I skip something? Okay. Parks and Rec? Cemetery? Okay, and we got, I got to skip back to the mayor's report real quick because, because I forgot something. Signing the checks kind of made me think of it. But at the last meeting, we, we agreed to pay the, leave the license for Jim Starr to practice law and the council asked me to call him and ask if he was going to do any other work besides for the, for the town of Pittkin and use the license for anything else, and he said absolutely not. So that was the answer that I got. He said absolutely not.
Well, you've told me that, that's why I paid him.
Well, yes, but I haven't-
Because he sent, they sent the bill.
I hadn't announced it yet, maybe, so I wanted to, yeah, I told you, I told you, but I wanted to tell.
So that's why I paid him, because I knew that was-
Yes.
Steve, do we have a contract with Jim Starr? Something drawn up and written?
We haven't yet.
So this is all just kind of a handshake?
We're just kind of working on it yet. We haven't finalized anything.
We need to have a contract.
We need to do that.
We paid him without a contract, so he can bump his nose out. I'm not saying, I'm just saying, in this situation, we paid him without a contract.
Well, we paid his license fee.
Yeah, we just paid his license. But yeah, we should get, yeah, you're, you're, you're probably right. There, there should be a, a contract drawn out.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, next is a special addition to the agenda to swear in trustee Chris Nassau. Yes, if you would stand and she will read the thing and you'll have to-
Does it matter where I stand? Can I go over?
No, you can stand over here, it'll be just fine.
I would say in front of the camera.
Yeah. Oh, in front of that camera.
Wait, just read that. Yep, read it out loud.
I, Chris Nassau, do affirm, I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and of the state of Colorado and the ordinances of the town of Pittkin and faithfully perform the duties of the office of town trustee upon which I am about to enter.
Okay. Okay, thank you, Rand, have a seat. Okay, now we'll go down to public comments from the town council. I believe Patrice had something.
Well, as you know, it's springtime and bear season, so it is time for us to begin changing some of our habits and I talked to the Parks and Wildlife people about this issue here. And there is a fine for bears baiting. That's the, you're, you're putting food out, that's what they're doing, and that's not approved. You want to keep the bears out of town and at night, if you will bring your pet food, bird food inside, they will not be tempted. Bears can smell food from one mile up to two miles, so they know that where it is. Even the raven tells them, they get quite excited when they, you leave food outside and make a lot of noise and bears know that food also. Be sure you're also locked your dumpsters. I, last year, I went upstairs to work and the window looking up State Street, I saw two women walking up there, and they were frantically, not frantically, they were just pointing to something over in the children's play yard and playgrounds. And so I had to lean to look and there was a young bear, teenager size, on top of the dumpster. And he was looking around to figure out how he got into this thing. And a pickup truck came along very slowly, went around the PHC building, went past the bear and the dumpster. About 20 feet, he stopped, he opened the door, got out and said, shoot! That was all, no yelling, just shoot! And the bear jumped off and ran down along the side of the PHC building. If you guessed it, two women who were casually walking along began running. Bear didn't see him, he just kept running to get out of town. So lock your dumpsters and bring your food and stuff inside at night so they're not tempted to go into your yard. And remember, this is their home up here in the national forest. Yes.
I just wondered, are you thinking that this hummingbird feeder shouldn't be taken down? I know I've seen many on states that are just broken.
Yes, because I forgot once, coming back late from a meeting, went to bed and I heard a noise and I got up and I looked out on the back porch and here was a bear as tall as I. And his hand was on the window and he was getting ready to tear down the bird feed. And I just took a boom, boom and just went like this and man, he's just shot right out of there. So yes, all of it has to come in, so he's not tempted.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just, uh, just, I just to, I just to add to that, I believe we're the only town in the county that doesn't acquire bear-proof trash cans. Everybody else does, Lake City does, all, all the towns here. And that's something that one day we, we probably ought to, we probably ought to look into is, is to have everybody get bear-proof trash cans.
They're out, I saw one just the other day down Valley.
Okay.
One more thing, be sure, uh, keep your trash inside until it's trash day, put it out that morning so that he doesn't come in and visit for that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Mayor, on the bear-proof trash cans, until it's required, a lot of people don't want to, but one thing we found, a lot of our customers do, if you don't know, I work for Golden Eagle, a lot of our customers just put a bungee cord across their handles.
Yeah.
And generally, if the bear can't, you know, if they'll knock it over and can't get into it, they'll leave it alone.
That would probably be, yeah, just anything, just anything to keep the lid from coming off, yeah.
One more, one more comment. I have seen parks have fits over bears coming in, tearing up their dumpsters to get inside. They just turn it over and really work it over.
I've seen them turned over.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll go on to old business, discuss and vote on the GCA franchise agreement.
Quinn. Quinn had a comment.
Well, as a, a non, you know, I haven't been here that long to understand the bear thing, but I take my trash cans inside my garage. They're never out. I take them out the morning of and then put, immediately put them back in after they empty. Now, in those cases, why would I need a bear-proof trash can?
Well, there's lots of things that can be done. We take what, what little garbage that we have and we put it in plastic bags and freeze it and then on, and then on trash day, we go out and throw it in the dumpster. So we don't, there are dumpsters that have been, town that have been turned over, but ours have never been turned over. Yes.
I think it's also that, like in Crested View, for example, probably downtown Madison, there are a lot more people out at night, you know, eating takeout food, that kind of thing. I really think that adds a lot to the bear problem, especially in Crested View from what I've heard.
It probably does.
Yeah, so, I mean, I think we should applaud ourselves that we haven't had bear problems here. I don't think we have had a very big bear problem ever, but I think it's because we're doing things like putting the trash in the garage until the day and putting it out in the morning and like you're saying, freezing the garbage like you do.
Yes.
Then putting it in the dumpster. All of those things really keep that problem down. It's a mess when there is a bear that gets into a dumpster.
And we, and we in the past have had people in town baiting them.
Yes.
And that, and, and that is never good. But yeah, but we wouldn't have to do anything like that if people would just use common sense and not put your trash out and not leave garbage out and like that. Yes?
When was the last time there was a bear problem?
Dry season.
I remember there was one up Third Street that like broke into a screen porch.
They can, they can come into town at any time and cause trouble.
They can at any time, it could bad in dry season.
Okay, I think, I think we've beat, we've beat the bear problem. Okay, now, on to the GCA franchise agreement. I hope that everybody's had a chance to read it. Okay, there are, are there any questions?
You know, I think is that the actual franchise agreement? Yeah, is it the actual franchise agreement? I don't know if that was something GCA drafted or not.
Oh, yeah, it's their language and you have to approve it in their-
Yeah, I just had that, I just had that.
Okay, because there was-
It's a 15-year agreement, right?
Yeah. Yes.
I'm sorry. I don't guess it really matters since it's not ours, but there was just some string of wording in it. It was basically saying that they, if they come in and do something, they have to restore the property. If they come in and dig something up to, to put service in after a store, it was missing some word, it made it seem to me kind of weird. So I bet, not a big deal, I mean, it's not our-
Yeah, it's not ours, so.
What, what page is that on the agreement? I don't remember very much.
Just the ordinance, oh, okay. Well, that's what we have to sign.
Yes.
Is this an ordinance or a reservation?
It's an ordinance.
Okay.
And it was-
Okay.
3.4.
Yeah.
I guess it's restored by GCA.
The clerk has informed me that this was put in the paper and properly noticed and-
I was sitting there, I was reading through and I was thinking it was something, but substantially it's former condition and it just kind of-
Substantially.
Yeah. So, I don't know, I don't think it matters, I mean, you understand what the paragraph is about, but it's just a typo.
It's a, it's a, it's a typo. Okay, is there any more talk on this, questions? If not, I would ask for a motion to, a motion in a second to approve the franchise agreement.
I'll make a motion to approve the GCA franchise agreement.
Do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor, can I ask a question?
Sure you can.
Sorry to interrupt, I'm going to make a friendly amendment to your motion.
Okay.
I think that you're moving to approve the ordinance.
Yes, right.
Authorizing the execution of the franchise.
That is correct. You, yes.
Ordinance number two, series 2016.
Yes. Okay. Okay, yeah. Ordinance, yeah. Motion to approve ordinance two, series 2016. Okay, I've got a motion from Eddie. Do I have a second?
I have a question.
Oh.
Do I discuss after a second?
Yes, I'll, I'll throw it, okay. You want to, you want to state your-
Three seconded it.
Three seconded it.
No, wait, we haven't done that yet. I was asking Eddie to restate his motion as ordinance two, series 2016.
So I make a motion to approve ordinance number two, series 2016, an ordinance of the town of Pittkin, Colorado granting a franchise and approving the franchise agreement two and with Gunnison County Electric Association.
Okay, now I ask for a second. Yeah, a second from Matt. Now, any, any comments on this before we go?
My only comment was, this is the first one to be passed, so why did not, I know we discussed it very briefly last week, but could we not put it number one because it is being passed now currently?
Well, number one's been published as number one as the short.
It's already, okay.
So it's already got a title. If it doesn't get passed, then number one just will not be an ordinance.
It just won't be, okay.
Yeah.
But it's already been published as number one and you can't change this to number one when you've published one under another title.
Understood.
Okay, I've got a motion in a second. All in favor of approving ordinance two, series 2016? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, we did that. Next is the noxious weed agreement.
Here you assign this, we'll get it.
Assign it. And I believe we sent home- And I believe we sent home copies of those.
I think I scanned it, didn't I send it to you?
Yes. We've been, it's the same, it's the same one that we've been approving for years.
We're basically required to do something about toxic weed.
Yes, if we don't, if we turn it down, then we have to hire somebody.
Or you could do it.
We have to have a licensed person.
What are you doing, ditches?
Yeah, we're doing the ditches.
Sprayed the pesticide.
You'd have to have a license to spray the pesticides, you'd have to probably end up paying them more.
My point is, it's three hundred dollars, it's, you're not going to find anybody.
No, you're not gonna, you're not gonna get out of it. It's not, it's something we're required to either hire them or approve licensed person.
This is a state mandate.
Yes, and so I think, I think the best thing to do is just let the county handle it. Then, then you know that it's up to their standards and what they want.
This was published also.
Is that, is that an ordinance?
No.
Just an I G A.
Is this an I G A?
So.
So I make a motion that we approve the intergovernmental agreement regarding undesirable plant management with Gunnison County.
Okay, a motion from Matt, a second from Brad, any other comments?
Steve, can I make a question?
Oh, yeah, sure.
A couple of years ago, I called the weed people in Colorado, in Gunnison, and I asked him, could I pull up the noxious weeds if I did not have, anybody spray my yard? He said, yes. I don't know if that's changed, but I can call and let you know next time.
Okay, if that would keep them from coming in the yard if you want to, if you want to take care of them.
They can't come in your yard, I don't, I don't mind weeds.
Well, they're, they're supposed to come and talk to you.
I'll tell you the guy you need to talk to, his name's John Muggles.
Well, they, they're, if it's on private property, then they're supposed to come and talk to you first.
Patrice, there's the guy you need to talk to.
And if you, if you refuse to let them do it, they would probably just ask you to pull the weeds, I guess.
We, we just try to pull.
Yeah, that would be fine.
That's really good information. This is like, no, we're ten miles from, like, somebody said, the birth of law.
Yeah.
Well, that's aging our.
Yeah, it's not.
I'm not sure what they're, what they are spraying.
That's good to know that we can.
Yes, okay, I've got a motion and I've got a second, all in favor of.
Brad?
Yes, all in favor of voting for the, for the I G A on noxious weed agreement with the county. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, now we're down to the short-term rental ordinance, and Jody reminded me of this, but the last time it came up, there were a lot of questions because the ordinance was drawn up by well-meaning citizens that are not professionals at this, and there were a lot of problems. And so it got put off until there could be a work session to work on these problems, but the work session never happened because of the, because people were going to be gone, and then there would be the election, and there wasn't time to, to do anything. So, as I recall, that's kind of where it stands right now.
Now, Steve, it was actually voted down zero seven. You called the question, and then Suzie asked if she could withdraw her motion.
Yes.
And it was easier just to call the vote, so it was actually, the vote was cast in zero seven.
So was it actually voted down then?
I don't remember what the vote was.
There was so much going on that night that.
It was voted, something was voted on, I don't remember the exact.
I thought that the vote was just not to pass it right then.
It had something to do with the work.
There were a lot of questions about the wording. So where, so then, where do we stand on this?
Let's find out.
Well, why don't we put it in a work session?
Yeah, well, if it was voted on.
It was voted to have a work session.
We can find that information in the video.
It was never scheduled because no one was going to be around to attend, and it just never happened.
Yeah, it was a vote. To stay around and discuss after, and what was taken, it wasn't approved, to stay late.
Yeah, we, we.
There was a motion made to approve a work session, but there was never been a.
That it, that, that's what it was, they wanted to stay late, and it was already ten o'clock at night. And so we just voted not to have a work session that night, and people were going to leave town the next day. And there wasn't a way to get together. So you want to put it on the agenda?
The vote was to not have, not to stay late.
Yeah, because it was just going to be too late.
My suggestion would be that we kind of touch on that whole part of this as we discuss at our work session, our vision. It's going to come up.
Well, yes.
Well, I think it definitely needs.
And then individually, we can discuss.
I agree.
Yeah, I think that kind of fits in with, with the vision.
And I, and I think we also need to discuss our set of orders at our work session. It's all about the vision.
What, what, do you have anything?
Well, I've heard, you know, we want to have a wastewater treatment system, you know, I think, I think we need to discuss, you know, where we're at, where we can go, how we're going to pay for it.
I don't think it would take over five million dollars.
Yeah.
Ten million?
So maybe we can get some things out of the vision.
Sure.
I will, I will, I will put it on here.
So we're going to just, I guess, we'll discuss short-term rental stuff as part of the vision.
Yes, we may not get down to nuts and bolts of hammering out, because the ordinance is, like I said, it was written by well-meaning volunteers, but it's flawed in many ways. So it needs, and, and, and an ordinance of that importance, if it was passed, probably needs to be written by somebody that's knowledgeable and legal background. That would not be me. Okay.
You don't have to sign it.
Yes.
We need to sign both, if we keep one.
Okay, uh, okay, well, yeah, I better, I better sign.
Because I'll pick them up and take them away.
I better sign a couple of things before I forget.
Sorry, if we keep one and we mail one back.
Okay.
It's July.
Okay, now we're down to new business, and the first item is, yes.
No, I bumped you.
I thought you were getting me, again, you're wrong, you're wrong. Uh, okay, the first item is, we have two applications for the position of town, of, of town clerk, and I thought it was better to go over these possibly in an executive session. So that's why I have on here to, that the town, that the town council will have to go down, go to the down, go to the downstairs room. I've got copies of the resumes, and we'll talk about it.
Mr. Mayor, in order to adjourn to executive session, there would be, need to be a motion addressing the specific basis for the adjournment to, the specific topic to be discussed at executive session, followed with a two-thirds vote in the affirmative. I only raise that because personnel matters are listed at twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, sub, four, sub, F, as a potential topic for an executive session, except twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, sub, four, sub, F, sub, two, says the provisions of sub-paragraph one of this paragraph shall not apply to discussions concerning any member of the local public body, any elected official, or the appointment of a person to fill the office of a member of the local public body, or an elected official ordered discussions of personnel policies do not require the discussions of matters personal to particular employees. In a less long-winded way, I think that when you're choosing between the two folks, you need to do it up here.
Need to do it here?
I think you have to.
Well, that's why I said may go into executive session. Okay.
I'm just throwing that out there.
Question.
Yes.
If we discuss the compensation.
That is a subject that's reasonably an element of executive session. So choosing between party A and party B in the open, compensation issues to be discussed on board.
So, in the past.
We'll discuss that in a.
We discussed this.
This is a two-page resume, this is, that is page one.
Do you have it?
You know, it's a paper.
Right.
Is it appropriate or not?
It's probably.
That's page one.
Hands, hands.
But, Mr. Mayor, I think that if you're talking about, Ms. Jody, if you're, and I'm not trying to chastise you, just, I want, I need your input for just a moment. If you were to want to discuss the compensation first, and if the current clerk were to say that she has no objection to discussing it in a public meeting, you could do that without adjourned the executive session, and then choose who you want up here.
Now, if you, if they have to vote on ones, isn't that a secret ballot vote type thing?
It's not supposed to.
It's not? Okay.
But what I'm saying, Mr. Mayor, is if we discuss compensation for Jody, and Jody has no objections to doing it up here.
She's already signed.
No, it's not me.
Well, it's still you write this very second.
Okay, I don't care.
All I'm saying is that if we do it and she waves the rights in executive session, we can discuss compensation, establish that, and then choose. And you do it all right here.
So you think we should talk?
I wave my, I wave my rights.
Sweet. Okay, so we can talk about the, about the compensation first, Mr. Mayor. Okay, first thing we will do then.
Unless you're paying, going to pay more than my current job, then I maybe I'll keep it.
Let's, well, let's.
How many times do you call me during the election?
I'm just kidding.
Okay, the first thing we'll do then is talk about compensation. So what do we think, currently the clerk gets five hundred dollars a month, but that's been from, I'd hate to think I'm in.
Two thousand and three.
It's in, it's in a reservation, I believe.
It's been, ever since I've been mayor.
Before that.
Yeah, even, even before that.
During the Truman administration.
I could have been.
It's two thousand and three, but neither here nor there, thirteen years, pretty long time.
And, and the job has gotten more complicated and may continue to get more complicated. So I thought it was time that we talk about this, and this is a good time.
Mike?
I guess my opinion is, is we've got something to start with, the five hundred dollars per month.
Yes.
I'd like to try to get some kind of an idea, I guess why I look at it is, my opinion is more of an hourly, and, and I know this has been brought up before for Jody, and as far as how many hours per month, I know it varies a whole lot, is what you said.
Oh, yeah. There's no way you can predict hours.
So you can't predict hourly, so the five hundred one month may be great, and then the next month it may be terrible. Might be five dollars an hour in one month and fifty dollars an hour the next month. So to me, I think we ought to at least consider an hourly wage and have whoever has that position keep track of their hours and put together a little report, a monthly report on what they've been doing for that month. Not exactly, it doesn't have to be a timesheet, but at least a little something to provide the board and the citizens of Pittkin what the clerk's been doing and how much time it takes to accomplish that.
And another way to look at that would be, you know, it's five hundred or whatever dollars a month, or maybe, maybe more, I don't know, and that covers so many hours.
Right.
And then if there's additional hours, this is what I had to do, and then there's a certain set rate for that.
I like that.
That way, it's not, because, you know, they're.
Because I would hate to have a month where the clerk got less than five hundred dollars.
No, I, I agree, I like that idea.
There's this base, and then they would just keep track.
They have a base, they have a base salary, and then if it goes over a certain number of hours, whatever we determine.
Right.
Then they get an hourly.
Rate above.
Above that.
And they have to show what was.
Right, what they were doing.
Yeah.
Yes.
Aside from the time that Jody put in on the election, would ten hours a week be adequate to, to cover?
If there was nothing. Now, you're talking about having two meetings a month. You've got, already, you've got every other week, you've got an hour or two just at a meeting, and then you've got hour two, you've got more minutes type of, you know.
And we've talked about having packets prepared before the meeting. I, I think the duties are going to be changing.
And remember, it's treasurer also, it's not.
Right.
Yeah, not just the clerk, it's the treasurer.
If we gave a base pay each month, and then she kept track, and anything that was above and beyond, so if we said forty hours a, a month, at fifteen dollars an hour, it would be six hundred, and then pay the same rate for anything that they documented above and beyond that, ten hours a week?
Forty a month.
There's also been people, I've heard suggest that it would be beneficial if the clerk kept some kind of weekly personable office hour, whether she's here in the town hall, she or he is here in the town hall, or an hour once a week, or just whatever it is. I mean, if you're going to.
We did that a long time ago.
Yeah.
Yes.
So if that's something else, we're going to add on to the job description, I mean, there's just, there is more.
I think when Robin Wilcox was, was the clerk, like, on a Saturday morning, she would have hours in the, in the downstairs office.
Right, like, two hours or something.
Yeah.
The other thing I would like to see happen with the clerk is, I know that there's, I have been told there's documents, town documents in more than one place, and it would be nice if we could task our new clerk with getting those.
Well, I, I have a suggestion, I know that, that if some, if they're going to keep records down there, I think you need to gather keys, because there's.
Yes.
You can't keep things in this room down here because too many people can have access to this room. And that's not right.
Which the better policy would be simply change the lock.
Because it's shut down, because there are.
Control who has the keys.
Yeah, because I don't think the big cabinets are even locked.
No, nothing's locked in there, just the door. I don't know how many keys there are in this town for that, these doors, so.
I've got keys, but I've never used them, I just opened it up. Yes, Eddie?
Are we talking like multiple big boxes of material, or?
Downstairs.
Those big fire, those big fireproof safes.
Oh, there's just boxes and boxes of records down there, but there, but then, I talked to Jim about this, the, the town does not have a record retention resolution, so you cannot get rid of anything unless you get a resolution on record retention. And once you adopt that, you can go in and destroy a lot that is outdated. But you can't.
Right, not until.
One of the problems is that the town has been run by volunteers for a hundred and some odd years, and this is, you know, we don't have full-time staff that sit down there and organize things.
Well, and that's what I wonder, as far as backups, so there's no backup?
Can.
Any of that?
Can we get back to the records?
Downstairs, in this room?
Sure we can.
Yeah.
Okay.
Probably not, that's just all newspapers.
This might, this might fit under vision of the town. This might come under town vision, so.
I like the idea of the base at six hundred dollars a month.
Okay.
I think it, I personally think it should be thirty hours at twenty dollars an hour, you know, thinking that way, and then anything above, or you could, however you want to say it, but, and then anything above that is still twenty dollars an hour, but it's.
I think that would sound good, yes. That would work for me.
You know, we're, this is a pretty important position.
Yes.
And I don't think twenty dollars an hour is.
No.
And there's no benefits, I mean.
Yeah, and not only that, but one of the things I want, and I think it's a really reasonable suggestion, not that it matters what I think in this context, but I want to remind you all of, and only Jody or Nancy can tell you about, is when you get a court request, you're supposed to be able to respond with the documentation within seventy-two hours, absent legitimate excuse pursuant to the statute, which allows you seven days, which is challenging if you have a life. So just throw that out.
A giant box of the documents in a room.
Yeah, yes, it's, it would be challenging.
I got a question, I mean, related to pay, how, how is it paid out? Is it pre-tax, post-tax?
How do we handle payment? I assume we're not taking taxes out?
No, we get 1099s at the end of the year.
So, I, I mean, I like the idea of having some set hours, you know, office hours, but I don't know, I don't know the full galley's, but I think when you get into setting hours for people, they don't become...
They're employed.
Yeah, they become an employee. I don't know for sure if they're not.
Well, I...
I think there's some gray area there.
Well, technically, the way mayors pay is, is handled as, I am self-employed. That's what the, uh, that's what the IRS says, I am self-employed, so I pay self-employed taxes.
Yeah, well, that's what the clerk says, too.
That's the same thing. Well, I mean, I don't, I can't speak for the clerk, 'cause I don't do the clerk's taxes, but I do my taxes.
I was just curious.
And that's what...
1099 is issued at the end of the year to anybody who gets over $600.
But I am self-employed.
I don't, I don't think there's an issue paying them an hourly rate.
Yes.
They've got to be able to do the task without supervision.
For sure.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I believe you're on to this question.
Yes.
Just gonna, um, tag on to what you're saying there. Actually, if you're a 1099, if you give someone a 1099, and they're self-employed, you cannot instruct them at all. So as soon as you start instructing somebody as to what to do and what the job description is, they've now cost over to become an employee, they no longer contract 1099.
Actually, there's a series of criteria, including providing the tools, providing licensing, providing direction as to the time and place of service, so there's a series of criteria that are considered in that context. Do I think that someone that's told to be at a meeting at 7:00 on a Tuesday night has a choice as to when to appear? No. It's not necessarily illegal fiction, but by the same context, routinely done. And reasonably so.
That doesn't make it right, because it's routinely done.
Uh, it's, it's fairly routine not to, not to pay folks through a payroll for that type of a position.
So it sounds like I don't have to show up if I don't want to.
You don't, but, and I'm not contradicting you, I'm merely saying that there are a series of criteria that are considered.
What I'm just saying, for the discussion, if we're trying to do things properly, then perhaps we should look at employee status rather than...
I think that's absolutely part of what's gonna happen at the work session, because it sounds to me like the role of staff is an issue.
Well, not only that, for a person for the tasking that you're talking about, somebody who's a $20 an hour job, then that person deserves to be paid as an employee and have their taxes matched in average. It's that viable of a position.
Well, and if, if I can interject something, it's kinda difficult to record exact times, because I get, I get phone calls, I get emails. When I, when I get a phone call and talk for 15 minutes about town business, I don't go over and write it down, and when I get an email and, and read it now...
Mr. Mayor, you're not the clerk.
No, but, but the clerk has the same time, the clerk should have the same time, 'cause I call the clerk.
Yeah.
And we talk on the phone, I was just using me as an example.
Emails and stuff that happens on time.
Yes.
Let's look further into it as we expand our future.
I think that Matt's idea sounds pretty good.
Is this something you'd wanna implement that way, or?
I think, starting with a new clerk, I think it would be good.
Next year, in a month.
Yes, I think it would be good. 'Cause now, now would be a good time.
We proceed.
You make a motion.
Okay.
Can I, can I ask one other thing, though? If we're gonna discuss this in one of the workshops, could we get the new clerk treasurer onboard, and then after we have this conversation during the meeting about the vision for the future, actually define what we expect the treasurer clerk to do in address the pay?
Provided you do so in an executive session.
Which we can do.
I think there's still a lot of questions about what we're gonna expect from the new treasurer clerk, if her responsibilities are gonna be expanded, or if they're gonna stay the same, if we're gonna require more hours, or...
Well, I think we're kinda all on board of this X amount of, X amount, hourly rate for X amount of hours a month, but defining the amount of hours a month in hourly rate probably should have a little more basis, I would say, than, I, I just, I don't know about pulling an arbitrary number out of the air right now without, because I, I'm thinking from the standpoint of, I'd hate to say, oh, $15 an hour for, you know, 40 hours a month, and then it turns out her job is, you know, becomes essentially, you know, a lot more difficult, and then it took a lot more time. And then at that point, it feels like, oh, I'm being underpaid, and there's a lot much of this job than $15 an hour, or $20.
What Matt was suggesting was, there's $600, but if she...
Yeah.
Works more than the 30 hours...
More than 30 hours.
Then she gets paid an additional amount.
The, whatever, if there's some expanded tasks or some difficulty could be beyond what the clerk has typically done, and then at that point, maybe $20 an hour isn't a pay, maybe a higher hourly rate is, or maybe... I just, let's put it this way, I've never worked a job where they didn't define your duties and pay. If you're getting paid, you had clearly defined duties, and the pay was, you know, reflective of that.
So are you suggesting, Corey, that we address this?
This will be the first one.
At, at either the work session, or the next meeting, you will find the responsibilities, and then address compensation?
I don't think it's a bad idea, I mean, then we've discussed a good outline for paying the town clerk, but as far as figuring out the rate and hours per month, it'd be nice to kinda define the duties, then you can at least have some idea of hourly rate and amount of hours a month.
Like I said, it's gonna be difficult to assess them about.
I know, but that's, something being difficult doesn't give you an excuse not to discuss.
Susan?
I would just like to remind everyone that normally, when the clerk treasurer position is open, we don't have two people that want it. We don't have any people that want it, because this job is very important, but it's very time-consuming, difficult, reading a lot of fine print, you have to be on your game, and Jody's done a great job. I'm telling you, it's not an easy job, and I think you guys should realize that you wouldn't even, I don't think I could say what their duties are. I think Jody might be able to, but you know, for you guys to sit there and decide what their duties are, and try to make that a real document that has facts in it, I can't imagine. I mean, I just, I've known too many of the towns' town clerks and know what a nightmare the job is, so that's my, my two cents.
I think, I, I think that I agree with you, and we'd be here all night if we decided to sit here and write down the duties.
So here's, here's, go ahead, Brad.
I don't think necessarily we need to define all the duties in detail. I think what we're doing is we're paying the town clerk, how should we say, I don't wanna say a retainer, but we're paying her so much a month to do the job of town clerk and treasurer. Now, if she comes back and says, you know, this is far and beyond what you're paying me, then I think we need to talk about it, and we could open and discuss it then. Our two candidates have very limited accounting background, and, and it's a bit of a concern to me, because I think a lot of Jody's skill set in accounting helps her with her duties. And I would like to see from these individuals, you know, what, what could you do to shore up your accounting? And then maybe we can adjust the compensation. I mean, that's, that's another way to approach this, is they gain more skill sets to do the job better and do it more efficiently, then maybe we could discuss the compensation of the job.
Would you be thinking of some like online course or something?
I'm, I'm good with an online course, and we just, you just have to follow their progress.
And it's set in stone. I mean, we could decide tonight to say $600 a month, or 30 hours, or 40 hours, or whatever you wanna set it up. That doesn't mean two months from now, they come to us and say, hey, you know what? This, this is taking a lot more time, or whatever. It's not set in stone, we can adjust it. And as far as coming up with a job description, we don't have to come up with a job description. We can go to other municipalities that are similar to Pittkin, they don't have to be the same, and we can get job descriptions for town clerks in those places to give us an idea.
CML has one.
And CML has stuff like that.
It's fair to my statutes, so...
Okay, so there's guidance, there's guidance there.
They have to do, that have to be then based on statutes.
Based on statutes, so we don't have to invent a will. We need to make sure that we're following.
The clerk part of it.
Right, the treasurer part is...
Well...
And I guess I see, I see the accounting part applying a lot more to the treasurer part of it, clerk part of it is a different skill set.
But right now, we're, we're talking about compensation, and I think duties would be a different thing, but we can get, we can get it from CML. But we have to come up with some kind of compensation, a little bit the same, but I'm trying to make sure that we have a person that's willing to do the job, not somebody who says, I got stuck with this, and now I don't want it.
Sidney's point is very good, I mean, if one is vulnerable, they have two people applying, and there's a decision to be made.
Because if we sit up here and nobody applies, then who's gonna take the minutes? Who's gonna pay the bills? You wouldn't look that. So, I like Matt's idea.
I make a motion that we raise the clerk's annual...
Monthly.
Monthly, thank you. Monthly pay.
I'll need to check. The previous was an ordinance, so are we gonna drop the ordinance, or are we gonna...
This is a resolution.
Can we admit, 'cause if we do, if we do an ordinance, we have to go to publish, and let's go to approve.
It, it affects our decisions.
Okay, so this will just be...
Matt, I...
No, it's, it's kinda painful, but, but, fact is, he still has a previous one, or this prior back, he doesn't want this to go.
Okay.
So... You wanna retract the motion?
No, I retract my motion.
I wanna make a motion that we pay the new town clerk, does anyone else pay the old town clerk? And if the town cancel, by the need, develops ordinance to go forward and compensate the town clerk that under it. Okay?
Okay, so we, so what we are, what we are voting on is to have Jim draw up a new ordinance?
Right. But we would then look at it, publish, and approve.
And we can make the pay retroactive, so it's all right.
Okay.
And also, I think we gotta figure out where we're gonna get the money for this thing. We'll have to justify it, but it's...
I like your point.
No, you're not, you're looking at people, okay, that's fraud, okay, but we will figure out where people come from.
Okay, okay, I've got a motion, I've got a second. Anybody else?
Excuse me?
Yes.
I just remember that recently, we've been trying to put dollar amounts into resolutions in the last administration?
Yeah.
So that it's not so difficult to change later on? So that's what I'm remembering, even though it used to be an ordinance, why you're not doing a resolution?
Well, because the funding schedule is very different from the compensation schedule.
Okay.
I, I just think it's more, and quite frankly, there's going to be, if there's going to be this kind of excessive, and appropriation excessive, the amount, maybe they have a special publication, and supplement of operation, so it's not quite as easy as a resolution. Okay, I've got a motion, and I've got a second. All in favor of having attorney draft a new ordinance concerning paying for the clerk treasurer, signified by a second.
Aye.
Okay. Now we are then requiring a motion. I'm gonna do that right here.
One more question, in the work session, is this gonna be something else we'll discuss?
Uh...
We're not getting a ordinance, we're not getting too much direction.
We're gonna draft it like Matt's idea, I thought.
I'm, I'm gonna draft it as soon as we can, then you're gonna fill in during the conversation.
Well, it's fine, it's, it's, you know, it's...
Okay, uh, now, you've all got the, you've all got the, you've all got the, uh, residents. And both of the candidates, uh, please. Yes. Uh, let's see. Amy, uh, you presented your resume first, do you want to speak, say anything, or?
Sure. Um, I wanted to apply for the town clerk position, because from what I understood, it was something that I didn't necessarily have to be in town for, as many of you know, we do have a temporary residence in Madison, but at this point, it's not an issue, because at the end of June, we'll be moving back to Pittkin, and at that point, I will be here, and it'd be very easy for me to do those office hours, if we're discussed, and, um, I am very detail-oriented, I'm very driven, and if Matt, or if Brad is not comfortable with my accounting background, I wouldn't willing to do that class, and, um, assuming anyone else is also appointed this position, or instead of me, I also would like to make it known that I would like to volunteer to help organize that records room, because from what I understand, it's kind of a disaster.
It is, okay, and you are currently working the pay fullback?
I am.
Okay.
But the hours are very unlocked throughout the year, so...
Okay, okay, thank you. Cheryl?
Um, quickly, I am interested in being clerk slash treasurer, mostly because I just want to be involved with things that'll have any character in, I think it's important to do my part when I can, and this is an area, since I haven't lived here for two years, and I can't do some of the positions, this is an area that I like, could take part in what's happening. Um, I did recently complete an online course for basic bookkeeping. I do have a friend who is a veteran bookkeeper, almost 10 years, I believe, who essentially would be on call for me, so I have some other resources outside of just myself, as well as hopefully some assistance from the previous clerk's advisors for specific things. But anyway, that's, that's basically, I just, I wanted to be involved, and I know I've done a good job, it will probably take me a couple weeks to kind of get a hang of how things happen, but I will, and hopefully be able to...
Or, are you currently working the job in kind?
I'm not working outside of home right now.
Oh, okay. That's a good answer, that's a good answer. I'll remember a long time back. Okay. Question?
I'm very excited to serve other areas, Matt's plans to keep selecting...
Yes.
We want to achieve that.
Would any of the trustees like to ask him to handle this question? Uh, how is the best way to handle this, Jim? Do we ask for a...
Uh, how is the best way to handle this, Jim? Do we ask for a motion? Say, would you say who favors this person, and then who favors that person?
Unless there's any more discussion.
Are there any more? Any more comments, questions? Okay, uh, I guess I would ask then, uh, to, uh, to raise your hand if you're in favor of Amy Wilk. Or raise your hand if you're in favor of Sarah Gitt. Raise your hand if you don't want either one of them.
Thank you.
Okay, and it's going to be Sarah.
Okay. And thank you, Amy, for
Yes.
You're welcome.
Your consideration, because it's really a luxury to have two interested entrepreneurs.
Okay, and Suzie's correct. It's a luxury. Okay, and we will. You're the superstar.
So is it time for, is it time for Sarah to come up? Well, we've got all.
Oh, oh. You should have said. You should have said. All three of you. Well, you're not. Sarah, come on up. Okay, thanks. Okay, sitting all day. So, we have to, we have to vote on the commissioner positions. It's usually, I do this as fast as possible. So everybody has a case to stand up and say, I don't know my job. We try to do this fast. But we have, but we do have some vacancies, and we've had some, and I, and I've had some volunteers, uh, Gaila Gibb, I believe, has volunteered for the environmental health. And, uh, I didn't get a chance to turn the computer on today. I'm just going to retract from work. But I had somebody for Parks and Rec.
Sarah Lamar.
Sarah Lamar. Okay. Has, uh, offered to do Parks and Rec. And that's still leaves, well, leaves, little leaves.
Cemetery.
Yeah, cemetery, ditches, and, uh, is that all?
Town Hall.
I think it's definitely going to be the Town Hall.
There's actually four vacancies on the cemetery.
Well, there's a cemetery board, yes, that we haven't, haven't been too active in the last few years. Jessi. Jared, I just.
Yeah, I, I did visit with you a couple of weeks ago, but I volunteered to take these cemetery.
Jessie, uh, uh, Tara said that she would take care of cemetery records.
I mean, I'm, I'm saying I'm willing to do that.
You're willing? Okay.
Hey, that's, that's.
She's willing to do this. I'm, I'm sorry that I forgot, yes. She's willing to take care of the cemetery records.
So what's left?
So, to me, yes. Yes. Yes, well, when we, yes. We can just, yeah, we can just, we can just get a motion and a second to accept these people. Like I said, I usually deal with quick, uh, before people have a chance to change their minds.
So you're saying there's environmental health, partial rights, cemetery legislation, and so, is that all?
Yes. Yes.
Did we ask somebody to volunteer for ditches?
No. Now, uh, let me, now let me say, you know.
What am I asking?
Nothing to say now. It's good. Okay, so you three, you're having to bring them for ditches. I forgot to bring the keys.
They're still on for a pro.
I'm still on for a pro. I'm still on, because I, Matt showed me, so, and I don't want to help out, you know. And, you know, what I, and what I want to say is, you know, if, if, if the ditches need weeding, and it's the middle of the summer, and you're busy running your, running your business, then, uh, we'll hire somebody to weede ditches.
That's.
Yeah.
We'll work for it.
Really, if you can't find somebody, then we'll, then we'll get somebody hard. So that just leaves, uh, was that all the positions still?
No.
Okay, okay, good.
PACA historical association.
Well, the, the PACA is just usually, it just gives a report. It's not an official bound position, no.
What question?
Uh, Sarah, Sarah, I need to write this down. See, I'm busy running.
Actually, that's Joey's job, so.
No, Sarah's. She finished the night.
Okay.
She has to read the filings now.
I guess I would need a motion and a second to accept these people.
I'll make a motion to accept the volunteers
Yes.
that we have for commissioner position.
Okay, you have a second. Anybody else want to throw their hat in the ring? Never too late.
As a matter of clarification, sharing part of the, please, uh, of the national decisions.
We have for environmental health, Gaila Gibb, Parks and Recreation, Sarah Lamar, Town Hall, Stephanie Nassau, Cemetery, Jay Garretson, Ditches, Corinna So.
Okay, uh, all in favor? Signify by saying no.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay, that is, and we will. Now, the German meeting at eight, seven, thirty.